Getting ready for we're gonna do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend?
Nope.
Nope. Nope, no Reverend thing.
Steve, can I go?
No.
We're looking very Reverend.
Greetings everyone. We get started, the first thing we're gonna do, we'll talk about Delaware Opportunities, First Time Home Buyers, Linda Hitt. Would you kindly, uh...
Yeah, I'll just give you a little...
Say your piece of forever.
For many, many years now, um, the village has had a revolving loan fund that originated with, um, a first-time home buyers program through the Community Development Block Grant. And it has served its purpose and HUD has now changed the rules and they don't want the municipalities to be, uh, having revolving loan funds in their coffers anymore, so they're calling them in. So tonight, um, the decision is for the board is how we're going to pay this back to the state, uh, to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. They gave us two options and the first one would be to allow the people who are in repayment now to continue and we, the village would have to pay a monthly payment. Every time they got money in, they'd have to pay the state over the next 20 years. The second option is to discharge the remaining loans and close it, pay one month's sum with the interest and be done. And that's what Delaware Opportunities recommendation is, is to just, uh, follow that, that recommendation of the state.
I agree.
So what we need is for the...
Board make motion.
Vote on that, yeah, make a motion.
Make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Where do we have to come up with the money?
No, it's money, it's money already there. We're getting it back.
It's not coming out of our budget.
They want all the money in outstanding accounts to be cleared up.
Yes, anything that's been repaid back into this revolving loan fund that we've used for first-time home buyers, rather than us loaning it back out again, they just want it to be...
Just return it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor? Close?
I second it.
Carry, you second it. Okay.
Reverend is...
Reverend's, yeah, Reverend Polata?
Sure.
Everybody withstand please and the Reverend will give you a moment.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, we, uh, have come to you tonight. It's the village board with thanksgiving and praise for your many, many blessings. You bestowed upon this village, Walton, and the leaders, officers, and members of the governing board. As this village board begin and continue to serve this community at this beginning of the month of May, your guidance and your continued presence be with them as they meet the needs and challenges and issues of the people of this community. So Lord, as we have gathered tonight, we pause to reflect on the importance of this village board in the lives and residents of this village, for the opportunities of service, education, governance, and community it provides, for the support it offers in times of crisis and needs, and for the kindness and care that binds and unites people. May the lives of each members of this board be strengthened and enriched because of this board that have come together tonight in this time and place. We be glorified even as they go about the business, the agendas of this meeting tonight, and be productive and resolve. Amen.
Thank you Reverend.
Thank you.
Thank you Reverend.
So was there anything else you need?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you Linda.
Hey Linda.
Thank you.
Linda.
Have they come up with another program to replace it or anything?
We have, um, Delaware Opportunities is currently operating and has a new one coming, uh, First Time Home Buyer Program, um, through the Affordable Housing Corporation that covers all of Delaware County, so we do still have a little backup there.
Okay, so it's not gonna be just, it won't be on the village, then it'll be on the county?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the funds are gonna be returned to the state?
Yeah.
They gotta pay off some of the, you know...
That might have been the largest undertaking that we've ever had a vote on, ever. She didn't say how much money is in those funds.
It's a lot.
No, there's not much left.
No, not much left, we used to have it up.
Only like forty-five thousand.
Forty thousand, I remember. Okay, number two, public input. I don't think there's anybody here with public input. All right, number three, the abstracts. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at them, if there's no questions, we need a motion to pass them.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Bill Brown, Delaware Engineering. First on the agenda, Ty.
First on the agenda, okay. Hello.
Good evening.
I don't think I handed those out yet, but there's homework for you guys.
We're gonna get a quiz on this?
One that's shorter than what we've seen in a while.
Ooh, something wrong with this one there?
Yeah, there's only a couple pages. Didn't ask for the world this time. They are asking for something. Couple ongoing projects, uh, the I-N-I study grant that was awarded to the village, uh, we're waiting for, uh, the contract and the funds from the state to kick that off, um, should be soon. Seabird repairs, uh, we have an RFP out right now for, um, contractors, um, to assist with that project, so that's in the works. On the water system, uh, working through the design, uh, surveyors have, uh, most of their stuff completed, um, so we're putting the drawings together and send to the health department. Curry well, uh, we did have some activity there over the last month or month or two, I guess. Um, the well was drilled a little over a month ago, which is a test well to be a replacement for the existing curry well which went in in nineteen sixty-seven. Um, we got the test results back, um, at the end of last week. Uh, there was, what we did see when we did the pump test, um, the water was dirty, it was silty, um, and when we did all the water quality testing, um, it showed some elevated levels of iron and manganese in the water, um, which we're hoping is just attributed to the sediment that was in, in the water and not, you know, dissolved in, in the water itself. The, the silt can be cleaned up over time with the develop, the, the well installation and development process. Um, we pumped on the well for eight hours, um, if we had done, you know, two or three or four days, the well would have gotten progressively cleaner, um, but it was a test well, so we didn't wanna pump on it and pay to pump on it for four days, so, um, we did the water quality testing, it was a little dirty, um, which, and it ended up having higher levels of iron and manganese, so, um, it's higher than what we would like, um, if we, if the water did hold at those levels, it would require filtration, which is something we wouldn't wanna install, we don't have filtration now, so we, we don't wanna add that, that kind of treatment to the facility. But we would like to do some more testing to see if the, um, iron and manganese is actually in the water itself, or it was just in the silt that was kinda dirtying the water up. So the hydrogeologist that, uh, were working was Sterling Environmental, um, uh, put together a proposal to come back out and do additional testing. Uh, they would rent a small pump, um, drop it down in the well, uh, take a water sample, send that to the lab and test for, um, dissolved metals, iron and manganese, as well as, um, non-dissolved iron and manganese to see if it's in the silt or not in the silt. Um, and debating, depending on the results of those tests, um, it would dictate, you know, what the next step is, so rather than jump right into, you know, putting the, the big well in, which is gonna be, you know, fairly costly to put that in, um, if we did that and found out there's high levels of iron and manganese in the water, then that may not be the best investment, um, with the, with the funds that we have, so, um, I, I think it is prudent to do some additional testing, you know, on the small scale, there's, you know, some cost involving, twenty-eight hundred dollars or something, um, but I think there's value to that versus spending, uh, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to put the bigger well in and if we found out the same answer then, you know, versus spending three thousand, then, um, I think that is valuable.
Let me ask you a question, what if, I mean, what if, I know, what if they, with the test and they find out that it's actually in the water? Do they go deeper? Do they go to another location? I mean, what's, what's the next?
Probably considering alternate locations.
Now, this, this test well is very close to the current curry well.
It's still over two-hundred feet away. So we, we, we put it where it was, um, to meet, we, we have to stay so many feet back from the stream, uh, from Westbrook and from the river, to meet health department rules and regulations, um, but we wanted to be able to utilize our existing treatment building.
So my question is, uh, would we think that the, the levels of the iron and manganese, is the, the water coming out of the current curry well is okay? This one being two-hundred feet away, would we think that it's pretty close to the same water?
Um, this, this one is a fair amount deeper, the existing curry well is, uh, is pretty shallow in terms of, um, the current, current wells, um, the, the one we drilled is a hundred and forty feet deep, um, we started with a hundred, it was, it was a lot of silt and sand, so we went another forty feet deep to kinda get a, a vein of water. We have to be at least fifty feet deep to meet health department requirements, or we have to filter the water, which we're, that's, we're trying to not have to filter, cause that's a six or seven-figure cost to have to filter water, so that's...
How deep was the other well there?
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet?
Yeah.
So now we gotta go fifty feet.
Well, we, we'd have to be at least fifty feet deep, um, to, to, you know, prevent potential contamination in, in current rules, um, so we, we started with a hundred when we drilled the test well and we weren't finding what we wanted, so we, the, the board authorized it, we, we went a few feet deeper and I think we're a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, um, to find a vein of water, there's a lot of water there, um, but right now it's on the dirty side, so, um, we're hoping that cleans itself up by virtue of putting, you know, pumping more water through the aquifer, um, but we need to confirm that the, the qualities of the water meet, you know, the, the litany of, uh...
So we're looking at twenty-nine hundred dollars on a two-million dollar budget?
Twenty, or twenty-nine hundred dollars on a three to four-hundred thousand dollar, the, the two million is the big water project, um, the, the well, we're, we're looking to, the village is looking to utilize the, the ARPA funds, um, which is in the range of three-hundred thousand, so we're trying to keep that as our, our budget for the well work, which is separate from the, the other project of replacing water lines and working on the things. So this is kind of a stepping stone that, you know, we weren't looking to have to do, but I think it's prudent to do versus the next step, which is the, the big well, which is gonna be probably a fifty-thousand-dollar-plus stepping stone. So that's, that's our, our, our ask of the village, so we got that, um, in later this morning, which I can circulate copies to you guys.
Could we, could we go deeper on this spot? I'm just trying to figure, cause sometimes you say if you go deeper, it gets a little bit better, or, or is that not?
Sometimes, sometimes. Um, it all depends probably where the rock level is there, you know, is, is the rock another ten feet deep, or is it five-hundred feet deep?
Oh, gotcha.
So that, that's something we'll, we'll have to consider, depending on the outcomes of, of, of the test results, but this just kinda gives us more data.
I just remember what you said before, sometimes when you go deeper, it gets...
Sometime, well, that's, that's what, you know, we started at a hundred feet and we didn't have what we wanted, we went to a hundred and forty, and it's better, um, but some of the, um, the testing stuff...
Well, if the testing comes out okay, then I guess was what I was gonna, if, if the test doesn't come out quite as good, would you go, would your next step be to go deeper and see, or, or would they suggest that you just go a little different spot?
I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, well, just...
So is there any way to start right now?
Yeah, they have to, they, they rent a pump, but, you know, we'd like to keep it, keep it in the works, so probably in the next week or two, they could be down here and then the info goes to the lab and then that takes a couple of weeks to get back, so...
That would come out of this year's budget, right?
With this, um, money, it's okay.
Yeah.
Because it's a project.
Use that in the budget?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the, it's, it's not, it's not your O and M budget that's, that's funding, it's the, uh, the stimulus funding, the federal, the federal funding, so it's kind of a, a capital project.
Is the motion to it? Allow Sterling to proceed, is that the motion?
That's our request, yes.
Spend the twenty-nine hundred dollars?
Until we'd have results, give or take. Yeah. Yeah, twenty, yeah, twenty-nine hundred.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'd make the motion, I think we should go ahead and do this. Thank you, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
That's all I have to ask for, uh, other, other project-wise, the highway department building project is proceeding, um, the contractor's ordering their parts and pieces, um, and I know the DPW, um, crew was starting to do some of the demo, so that'll probably be a, uh, late, late summer, fall project before we see the building coming back up out of the ground.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Bush?
Oh, the, uh, I'm sorry. Wastewater Treatment Plant Evaluation and Needs Determination.
Yes, sir.
By any chance, Jason, can the, the evaluation and needs determination include that screen that we talked about that would save the pumps from all the debris that's going in it? Is that like, could that be a reality?
Yes. Uh, it's a cost, cost factor.
I know. We have to look at it because we're running down a dead-end path with this stuff jamming up our...
The motors all the time, yeah.
Am I wrong? I don't...
Yeah. Remember you looked at, how much was the last one? Was it three-hundred thousand, that is, or was it more?
To buy, to buy the screen is probably in that range of three-hundred thousand and the screen's gotta go in, that's thirty-eight deep and you need a building over top of it.
We're talking half a million dollars probably.
Is there any share with the city on?
There's no improvement whatsoever in this situation, right?
No. None.
It's, it's gotta be, I mean, and it's a common thread, um, you know, we've talked about it, uh, it's a common thread kinda across the industry, um, New York City themselves, they have massive, massive screens in their facilities and, um, you know, fifteen or twenty years ago, this wasn't really a thing, and today it's the big thing, so every community across the state, the wipes, the wipes, the, the rags, the, you know, things that shouldn't go down the, the drain, I know that there's some of the stuff says flushable and it'll pass through your plumbing system, but it comes up either in the collection system, um, which is very costly, or it comes up in the wastewater plant, which is, you know, millions of millions of dollars of infrastructure, um, that's funded by the taxpayers, um, that, you know, when things like that go down the drain, it's, it's detrimental.
To the replant?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Bush?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
Everybody get the report okay?
Yep.
Any questions, concerns?
About all the trees that fell in the front?
We got three of them out today.
You tore enough by the school?
We got two out by the school and one out by East Street Bridge. Yeah, we've been chipping brush non-stop for...
Yeah, there's a lot of it.
Couple of weeks. We got more to go, but at least we got kinda caught up on it for now.
Good thing we brought you a new chipper.
That's right.
That thing works good, huh?
Works very, very well, yes.
We could have sold it to the town, huh?
I think they're gonna borrow it. Nothing serious, other likes other than the storm. I do wanna touch base a little bit on curry well situation. So I went and did water chores Monday, or Friday, I'm sorry, and curry number three was back to its old games of not working so well. So we had to turn the pump down, pump less water was breaking suction, creating havoc on things, so we can only turn it down to so far before it started having other issues, so that well is not, not doing well, just so everybody knows. Hence the reason for the new well.
Yes.
Things good, I did put on here, I have to discuss, I'd like to send myself to a water training up in Delhi, which is free, um, on the tent, for my water license credit for the renewal.
Make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
And I want permission for another one, um, it's in Half Moon, New York, it is also free to the village, um, it's a training from Mueller, which is a company that makes all the fire hydrants we use, all of our water repair fittings, um, so I'd like to, for myself to go to that and take one other person with me, John Hoffman, hopefully he can go, um, that you would just have to pay, cause it's about two hours away, so it would be a little travel time, which would fall into overtime for John, but that'd be the only cost.
Make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carry. That's where my dad went to high school, Half Moon.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I've never even heard of it. If John can't go, I'll find one of the other guys to go, cause somebody should definitely , I think it'd be a real good one to go to, and that also has the water credits for license. And that's pretty much all I have.
Any other questions, Bush? Thank you, sir.
Thanks for what, uh, DPW did, you know, with the storm.
Yeah, that was great.
Waste water, Shane, Jason?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
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 Everybody get the report?
Yes.
Yep.
Indeed.
Got it.
Questions?
Supposed to be same ones. What can we do about the turbidity?
Well, uh, since then, uh, that all happened at the beginning of the month when we were here last time, um, it's been a pretty good month in that regard. Seems like they've definitely got a bit of a, better of a handle on it over there, and as of late, things have been looking up, so hopefully that progresses.
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah, hopefully it keeps going in that regard, um, they're working on different things over there, so, um, hopefully it, it continues.
The, the excess flows, I guess, I take it is from the excess water this month?
Yeah.
That's the, the average flow, one-point-eight, as opposed to one-point-five?
Yeah, so...
So that's something that should go back to normal?
Yes, it's slowly coming down, but there are leaks in the collection system.
Sure.
Generally, as the trees start sucking water, that'll go down as well.
Okay.
So after the meeting, you've got some things worked out with them?
Yeah, we had that other meeting with them over the, over there, and just as the, as the plants progress through the month, it's, it's, it's looked better. Um, since our last meeting at Lactalis, um, I was actually off last week, but, um, Shane said that things are going quite well over there, so...
So we haven't run into the same problems we've been...
Just the first two days of the month is what caused the violation and it's been better since.
Then, after the meeting, then, whatever they've done, it's helped, whatever we've done together, it did improve.
Yep, it's improving.
We have another meeting on the, I haven't talked yet, on the eleventh, at the wastewater treatment plant, we're gonna have another meeting with them, and, uh, Jean-Marc is the guy, the, who is the overall manager, I guess you would call of this place, he's gonna be there and we'll sit down and go on more things, but, but it's going well, it's going, everybody's listening, we're trying to work together, and I think it's a good thing.
Uh, if there's no other questions, we do have a request, um, for purchase of, uh, for BDP Industries to install a larger hopper and pump on the screw press. The current hopper and pump are fouling, preventing us from operating the screw press. It's a eighty-twenty split for, uh, twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty cents, and we do have money on our plant equipment line for that.
I would make that motion, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll schedule it right away so we can hopefully get billed before the end of the budget period.
Yeah.
This evaluation and needs determination that Bill talked about in his report, what is SPDES? What is that?
That's Speedy's, that's the, um, state permit, it's...
So is the list all made up for that?
Yeah. The list for...
There's a list that we're supposed to be working on for the upgrade?
I think Bill was working on the list, right?
So you're gonna add that screen to it?
Yeah.
Screen and clarifiers.
Yeah.
Thickeners, I think you had on there.
Thickeners, so, yeah.
A lot of the original equipment from the plant, I know you had on the list. Yeah, that screen would be a big, big help.
The seabird repairs, there's a plan for that?
They're, I get, they're working on one? They're working on one.
And replace the series valves, that's what we have, uh, RFPs out for right now.
Cause without that, we're done, right? We're stunk, we just have to all move away.
If the valves, if the valves break when they're shut, it's not gonna be a good solution, situation, but, um, because there's so many moving parts down there, it's gonna take a pretty good song and dance to get everything planned and...
And the building was built around it too, right?
Uh, yeah. So you can't just shut off certain valves without having to have water run through the other valves, and it's, it's a, it's a pretty good maze down there, so we're working through it.
But it's all under control?
It is, is, is under control, I guess, as we can chaotically make it, you know, we got a little handle on it, I guess. Controlled...
Well, Bill's smiling, so I shouldn't sweat too much about it, but I, this is the things I have nightmares...
Yeah, how about, Bill, how long is that gonna take to get this worked on? We've been doing this for a while.
We have, uh, bids due on Thursday next week, the twelfth, Thursday the twelfth is next week, um, and that'll allow us to have the contractors order parts, which are probably six to eight, eight weeks out to get the parts.
Okay.
That's the only thing I wanna know.
Anything else?
Anybody else have a question? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, folks.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Chief?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Okay.
Good. So I have a...
You want to bring all of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Next month, we should be able to get it on email form and, uh, get, be able to get it prior to the meeting, so it's a work in progress. Thank you. Yep. So our calls, we're definitely up this past month, uh, we took a lot of calls. Again, the general calls, um, compared to what we're used to seeing, um, this is my interpretation of what Rich used to do, going through the logbook, so it's probably gonna be a little bit skewed as far as what the, this is the new norm for right now, cause I don't have like the handle that he did on it, um, but we ended up with three-hundred-and-twenty-nine calls, um, so that's pretty busy compared to what we've done before in the past in the month of April. Uh, May's starting off pretty good already too, because I handled fifteen of them today, so...
I saw you were busy.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
The, this is just out of my pure curiosity, but the offender of the motor vehicle accidents in the hospital parking lot this morning?
Which, which, which one?
Was it the same offender that created the...
No, they're two separate.
It was separate?
Yeah, no, it was two separate.
I walked, I landed right in the middle of that and I thought a plane crashed behind me while I was going, huh?
Yeah, no, that was two separate motor vehicle accidents, they, all within a couple.
I thought there was like a person stroking out, driving around hitting...
No, no, I was just getting ready to clear from the one motor vehicle accident when another one occurred right, I was getting ready to leave, so spent most of my day at the hospital parking lot, but, um, yeah, so, um, obviously with the time, it's getting warmer, people are coming out, COVID's kinda relaxing a little bit, so more people are gonna be out, so, um, we're gonna get busy again. Still looking to fill our full-time slot, so we haven't got that, um, figured out quite yet.
The police officer spot?
Yeah, Kevin's spot, we still haven't had, uh...
Do we advertise for Rich's too?
Yeah, we advertise for both spots and, um, you know, the, not a lot of people wanna be police officers, I don't think, right now.
No.
disappointed in how many applicants I got for either position. There wasn't like what I thought there was gonna be. I do have a couple candidates, candidates for Rich's spot, I'm gonna be reaching out to an interview. I do have a part-time candidate that I'm gonna be, that I've already interviewed, already started a background check. He already is certified and works in a local department, so barring any, I don't see what unforeseeable things, I was hoping to get that done today, but just didn't get a chance to get any office work.
There were too many car wrecks.
Yeah, there was, yeah, it was like demolition derby night or something, so. But, yeah, that being said, I'm hoping that possibly before the end of the month, we can come back and talk about some things, so. Other than that, that's really all I got for this month. We had the little scare there in the missile that was found in the village.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Talking to the state police, they were pretty confident at the time that it was, that it was live munition.
Right.
Again, they thought possibly there was dynamite or something in it, so, but they handled it, and, you know, talking with the, the guys from the bomb disposal unit, they were, you know, okay with how we handled it as far as evacuating that part of Main Street and, you know, rerouting traffic and stuff like that, so.
Do you know what the result was when they brought it back and they actually looked at it?
I don't yet, Mayor, I haven't got that back yet, so.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Because I know the door hit, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying, it could have just a little residue.
Sure, yeah. So, I mean, when I get that information, I'll share it with you, of course, I'm still looking for it, so. But other than that, that was pretty much it.
I'd like to go in the executive session a little bit.
Okay.
With you for a few minutes, just ask about personnel.
Sure.
What?
Could we do, maybe if we did at the end of the meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, at the end of the meeting, that's what I'm saying, now or now.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
No, what am I doing? But I don't. Okay. Number five, trustee reports, we'll start down with Nate, we'll start this side.
Just a moment here. Not too much to report with the theater. Our, our meeting was supposed to be on the Tuesday when all the snow fell, so the meeting was canceled this month for the theater board. Just what's going on in the theater this month is there's a coffee house on Sunday the 15th with Walton United Presbyterian Pastor Paul Hutt, and he's gonna be playing classical cello. And if anyone hasn't heard Paul or seen his videos, he's an amazing cello player. That's at 7:30 PM in the Andrea Paternostro room. May 19th, Thursday night, we have classic flicks, Clint Eastwood in The Good, The Bad and The Ugly. So all you Western fans, I'm one of them, come out and come see that, you're gonna love it. And we have Music on the Delaware presenting the real-time Dixieland Band, covers of renowned jazz artists and having a grand old time. And that is Saturday, May 21st at 7:30 PM. Now, the parks are getting ready to ramp up for summer. We have, we have some lifeguards coming back this year that we're very happy about. We have our head, our head lifeguard at 13:40 an hour is gonna be Jose Mirabal. And then we have five more lifeguards coming back at the 13:20 an hour rate. Those are Robert Conklin, Andrew D'Addazio, Kinder Church, Willard Pettit, and Colby Frainer. And we are very happy to have all of them back. We're still looking for more lifeguards, so you can apply, lifeguards can apply at the village, or they can see me and I'll be happy to send them in the right direction. We have Grace Reinhart returning as a mower at 13:20 an hour, and we will be looking for one more mower, so that's another position that we're gonna be looking to fill. We have Jackie Armstrong coming back for arts and crafts. And Ian Behringer is gonna be volunteering through the Delaware County ARC, doing some odd jobs and a little bit of painting for a few hours a week at the park. So we're very happy to have Ian. Like I said, we're still looking for lifeguards, we're looking for a basketball supervisor at the park. So anyone who knows anything about basketball, you know, preferably a student, we would love to have someone come down and just supervise some basketball drills, maybe referee some basketball games, but just come down and have fun with the kids and supervise some basketball time on weekdays at the park. The pool is in the works to get someone to come teach a WSI, a water safety instructor course at the pool in late June for lifeguards, and they need to take that course to be able to teach swim lessons. Currently, we don't have anyone to teach swim lessons, so we really would like to get some lifeguards to come take this water safety instruction course, which will be covered for Walton students through the Candy Russell Laps for Lifeguards fundraiser that was held last year. And that fundraiser is gonna be held again this year and annually from now on to raise money for Walton students to take water safety instructor courses, because they're like $250 a student, and that's been a problem for, for us to get lifeguards, so we've raised some money, so it's no cost for Walton students. So we will have that WSI course at the end of June, and we really hope to get some people to sign up so that we can have swimming lessons. We really wanna have swimming lessons. The pool will open tentatively on June 24th, and the rec programs will tentatively start on June 27th. Those dates aren't set in stone, but we really hope that those are gonna be our dates, June 24th for the pool and June 27th for the rec programs. And that's what I have for you today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for those?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I am interested, for myself, I would like to attend the NICOM Community Revitalization Concert on the second day, which is June 9th. It's a, it's a cost of $150 for me to attend, and I'm not looking for anything else, I don't want mileage or anything for the car, just, just coverage for my mittens. And there's some really good, really good programs there that I think that could benefit the village with the knowledge of.
That's the NICOM thing, right?
Yeah.
Did I say concert? Thank you.
NICOM, yeah, concert, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, we're going to a concert.
NICOM, loser.
I make a motion that Nate go to NICOM.
Second? Hold favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay. Do we need a motion?
Before we make the motion for the lifeguards, are we allowed to talk about the generous, generous and benevolent benefactor, Courtney Hannan, who arranged with the business associate to make a giant donation to the pool this year?
I am actually unaware of the details of this.
She came across a business associate who stumbled upon really expensive pool furniture. And she asked us if she could, if that happened, could we, she funnel it to the pool? And I think the only thing we had to do was make sure that the fence behind the pool area, behind the kitty section where the mother's weight was secured, so we wanted Brian to make sure the fence was fixed and that he could accept the furnishings. Giant donation. Thank you, Courtney Hannan.
Thank you, Courtney Hannan.
Yeah, very nice.
So I don't know, I don't know where we're at with it, but.
Yeah, I had heard about some pool furniture. I know, I know that we've had the Oniana Fence Company in to do some work on the fences at the pool.
So then it must be happening.
I, I think we should be able to do that.
That's very good, Courtney Hannan, very nice. Excellent.
So with that said, I make a motion that we hire the new lifeguards.
I need a second.
Second.
Hold favor?
Aye.
Pose? Carry. Eric, you have anything?
Not tonight.
Okay. Dick?
No, I don't.
Steve?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Myself, I don't have much to explain, except that I know we've been talking about the Bolin Alley, the Bolin Alley, the Bolin Alley, it's, it's really coming through. I signed the deed today, I put it in envelope, we overnighted to the attorney in, out by Ben, Elmeyer, I couldn't think of where it is. And I spoke to the, the new owner, and he'll be there tomorrow, the next day to sign it, and I'm gonna meet him by the end of the week, he'll give me the check for the rest of what he owes us, and I'll give him the keys, so. Barring anything, anything else happening, he's all, he's raring to go, he can't wait to go, he said he's got 20 people ready to go, they're gonna be working seven days a week, and so I think it's, it's, it's coming through fruition, takes a while, but it's, it's a good thing. As far as anything else that people are talking about, Tom Sirebonne, yes, there is, a real estate had bought it from Joe and Benny's. They have a couple franchises, they're not sure exactly what franchise is going to be there. I know there were rumors of Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins, and it may well be, but there's nothing confirmed. The only thing I do know, that it is gonna be a franchise, the owner, Joe, that owns Joe and Benny's, part of his deal is that he has to take the building down. It took a while because he had to make sure it was clear of asbestos and get a permit for it, and he had that all done, so very soon he'll be taking the building down and then they can start building. And as soon as I find out for sure what franchise it is, I will let you know. But it is gonna be a franchise, it will be a drive-through franchise, so I just wanted people to know that. 150 Delaware Street, you've probably seen it at the corner of Townsend Street, it's all been renovated inside, the business is available to rent, she said that she would give very, very good prices, anybody's interested. On the second floor, she told me that there's a, a local artist who has rented most of the second floor, it's gonna be an art gallery up there, so I think that's pretty good. It seems that we're moving in a good direction. Also, people have seen Brandau's, it's been bought by an artist who makes candles and other things. He moved up here from Brooklyn. It's, if you go online to UA Collections, you'll see exactly what he makes, he has a great following, he sells to three, four different countries, he's very well-known. Probably a month or so, he'll be opening up, he's gonna do all his manufacturing and everything here in the village, so that's another storefront that's doing good.
Did Anne Jones restart the construction?
Anne Jones is starting on her reconstruction, she has had some issues with contractors, but she's got somebody else, and that's starting on it too, which is, it's gonna be a hairstylist, which I think is really good too. So we're, we're really, I think the village is moving in a pretty, pretty good direction.
I see, there's a new chiropractor in Catskill Dance Moves, there's a sign on the building.
I didn't see that one.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see that one.
It's on the side of the building.
I need an adjustment.
Yeah, okay, good.
Try her out.
Good. So, so overall, I would say that we, as a community, are moving in a very positive direction. Sheffield Estates, there's, there are a couple businesses interested in moving down there, it was bought by the IDA. One of them is the Hudson Valley Fishery, that's looking to go down, where they're doing some testing of the water. If they came here, it would be a big thing, so. As I, as I get more information, I'll give it to news to everybody, but we are moving in a very, very good direction, I think.
Are all those homes sold?
Yes. I think all of them, there was three of them, if, if the fishery comes in, they wanna keep them, because they have students that come in and spend, spend time and working for, so. But yeah, IDA, I think they bought two of them, there's one left they're still working on, so.
Yeah, to the candle business, I met the proprietor yesterday, and he's very excited to get that building back into shape, and, you know, I'm excited that people are investing in these buildings again and saving up, so. Yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, we're moving in a very good direction. Okay, next, item seven, we need to set a date for a meeting to do the last abstract from the 2021, 2022.
I'm suggesting Wednesday, the 25th.
But to close out that year, you mean?
Yes.
The levies on, the taxes?
No.
No?
Just for the abstracts for most of all of May's purchases.
Oh.
So we can close out our fiscal year.
Sounds good to me.
Can you do 4 o'clock, 3:30?
Yeah, that's good. So you need a motion for that?
After school. I'm gonna make the motion.
So May 25th at 4.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Second? Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Okay. Oh, one other thing I forgot to say, and I, you know, we gotta bring this up too, we've been talking to Lactalis about a new contract. They obviously bought out what Craft was, and things have been going okay with that, you know, it just takes a little bit of time, we, both sides have things to issue, but they've been working with us, and I want everybody to know that it's a good thing, they have a lot of good possibilities happening, they wanna bring in new items into the plant, they seem to be working with us very well, so I wanna say that's a good thing for the village, so we need them here as well. All right, next thing, number eight, the Cemetery Association asked to put a camera in down at the wastewater treatment plant that would help see in the cemetery what's going on, at the same time, it would be looking at certain areas down at the wastewater treatment plant too. They would be willing to pay any cost or anything that needs to go along with that?
I don't see any problem with that. I'd make a motion to allow it.
Didn't the attorney reviewed that?
He had some concerns.
His concern is about liability?
Let me re, oh, I think I had, but he's still, yeah, hang on a second. I have it here, I'll clear it.
Well, once he says it's okay, we can sort of say that, then.
Well, he didn't say it wasn't okay. He says, yeah, I, I think what they want to do is link up the camera using village electricity and enter the service, and then basically record what's going on in the cemetery. I don't know if it's from a stationary point, the WWTP would be, be visible. If it's useful for us, I would have no particular legal objection, but I would talk to the guys at the plant as to whether or not they think it is necessary, this is necessary. Otherwise, it seems to me that we would have to rent the use of the space to them, that's probably the public safety interest that could be used as justification if we really wanted to do this. That's just a suggestion.
I think there were still some questions about, like, where the camera footage was gonna end up?
That would be the only question I think I had, Johnny.
Yeah.
Because Jason didn't know that. The camera, I understand, was gonna be located on an existing pole?
I think they were, they're on a, on a building over there.
Okay, but it'd be on their building, not on ours.
It'd be on our building.
Our building.
Our building, our electric, our internet.
Okay.
I talked to Steve, but he never really gave a clear answer as to where the footage is going and who would, how access would be given to that. But other than that, that's really all I know.
Okay, so it was, it was gonna go on a, on a pole?
A building.
Inside the fence?
Inside the fence.
And face the cemetery? They just want to see their.
Yeah, they would use our infrastructure with their camera, pay the expenses.
So essentially, they would be able to see our gate and their gate, and, and the area just going in.
Right.
I mean.
And that, that's what the attorney raised, is if there's shared purpose, shared use, shared access, so that sounds like.
Who, who gets the footage of any of the cameras we've got now?
The cameras that we have now are all inside the police department.
All, that's the only cameras? We don't have any other, any cameras outside?
No, no, rooms inside or just outside the police department, outside the front entrance and back entrance.
Okay.
Anything else is inside the police department.
And our building is upstairs in the court.
Yeah, okay.
And that's all contained in the police department.
I mean, I, I don't object to approving it, they're gonna have to figure out how they're gonna store it, where they're gonna store it, because as far as I know, we don't have any connection to it.
I mean, I, I don't object to approving it, they're gonna have to figure out how they're gonna store it or where they're gonna store it because as far as I know, we don't have any connection to it.
Well, I think they may, they already have a security system installed over there. They, they don't have power to that lower gate by us, so that's why they wanna use us. So I believe through the internet, they're gonna store it on their, whatever they have there, so I guess if something went on, we could request that.
Requesting, yeah, the way I understand it, it's just, it, it, it's a revolving thing and if you've got a, a date or a time, they can go back and find it, but they don't actually keep anything beyond that.
Right, I believe so.
It just embraces it as it puts something new on.
Right.
So you guys are okay with, I mean, like you can deal with whatever that drama's gonna be to get it in, right?
Yeah, that's, that's minor.
And we would have some security, we gain something.
Right.
I, I.
Make a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Do a second?
Did he want, I hate to be the uh, the careful one, but he, did he want something written?
Yes, he'll have to write up an agreement.
Okay. We can do approval in.
Pending, pending.
Pending.
Okay, okay, I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, thank you. Number nine, attorney, retainer agreement.
I'd send it all on, you guys?
Yep.
Yep.
To retain Mr. Merzig for.
Did he double his rate?
It did go up some.
A little bit, but he didn't double it though.
Is it in the budget?
No, we didn't get this in time after you passed the budget.
Well then.
How about that?
Well, then what?
So what are you gonna cancel to pay for the attorney this year, it's not in the budget? No, the attorney's got a line item, it's just his, his increase isn't in there.
How much is your increase about now?
I don't remember at the moment. He was at ten thousand four hundred for the year.
And that much is in there?
That much.
For ten thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
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 I'd make a motion to approve it.
Accept the agreement?
Do a second?
I second, we need an attorney.
And if you get the, the going rates down, some attorney would be a lot more than what we're paying right now, that's for sure.
So we have to, a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close? Carrie? Delaware Engineering Agreement.
There goes the bank.
There you go, right there. You want clean water?
That, that kept at this historic rate.
Yeah.
And that amount.
Yeah, thank you.
So that's, that's already in the budget, correct?
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Close? Good, thank you, Bill, thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? If not, um, we're done for now, we just wanna go into executive session and discuss personnel. Thank you, everyone. Chief, just a few minutes will be done.
We need a motion for that.
Thank you all.
We need a motion, go into executive session.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, thank you.